Before I call this meeting to order, I would like to note we have an interpretation services for this meeting. The interpreter this evening is Mr. Bravo. Mr. Bravo, would you mind raising your hand? Please ask him for a listening device if you'd like interpretation services. Antes de llamar a la junta orden, me gustaría notar que contamos con servicios de interpretación para esta junta. El señor Bravo está sentado ahí atrás. I'd like to call this meeting to order for the City Council meeting of February 21st, 2023. Madam Clerk, could you please make an announcement about accessing the meeting and call the roll?
In order to participate in the City Council meeting virtually, please register to speak using the link on the agenda under Public Comment or call 1-669-900-9128 and use webinar ID number 81717058288. To raise your hand to speak on a particular agenda item, please use the Raise Hand button in the Zoom Meeting portal. If you are using a phone, please press *9 on your telephone keypad to raise your hand to speak. Press *6 to unmute your phone. When it is your time to speak, the microphone will be unmuted for the time allotted by the mayor and will be muted upon completion. Councilmember Aguilera Hernández?
Here.
Councilmember Cordero?
Here.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Here.
Councilmember Soto?
Here.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Here.
City Attorney Mr. Watson, would you give the closed session report?
Yes, ma'am. With respect to the closed session regarding APN 117240028, instructions were provided by the council to the negotiator on price and terms. No further report is needed.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. Our first item on tonight's agenda is a proclamation that I will be presenting, and I was just notified that Lawanda Lyons-Pruitt, who was going to be accepting the proclamation, will not be here due to illness, but she's probably run herself ragged because she was so busy putting on two ceremonies over the weekend and has another one coming up on Saturday. So, is she online?
She is online.
She's online. Okay. Good evening, Lawanda. I hope you're feeling better. Whereas when Dr. Carter G. Woodson established Negro History Week in 1926, he lobbied extensively to establish Black history as a national institution and to encourage the study of African-American history. And whereas the Black family offers a rich tapestry of images for exploring the African-American past and present and knows no single location since family reunions and genetic ancestry searches attest to the dispersal of family members across states, nations, and continents. And whereas historically and today in the 21st century, Black people have worked the political angle to seek their rightful place in the country. And all three of the Civil Rights Acts, the Voting Rights Act, and the Fair Housing Act were concessions to the civil rights and Black power movements. Whereas societal and political forces escalate to limit access to and exercise of the ballot, eliminate the teaching of Black history, and work to push society back into the 1890s. The theme for 2023 is Black Resistance, which reflects changes in how people who are a part of Africa, diaspora in the United States, and Santa Barbara County in particular, have viewed themselves, the influence of social movements on racial ideologies and the aspirations of the Black community. And whereas, Black History Month reflects on the struggles of Black families at the same time being a time to rejoice and celebrate their accomplishments, integrity, leadership, and determination, as well as to honor the history and progress that has been made in creating new opportunities for future generations. Now therefore, I, Alice Patino, Mayor of the City of Santa Maria, hereby recognize February 2023 as National Black History Month in the City of Santa Maria, and encourage all residents and businesses to acknowledge and celebrate with appropriate ceremonies and activities. It witnessed whereof I appear to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Santa Maria to be affixed this 21st day of February 2023. Thank you. And Lawanda, did you want to say a few words?
There we go. Good night, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. Thank you so much for that beautiful resolution, which I accepted on Saturday. I am a little bit under the weather today, but thank you so much. I'm sure my spirits are going to be lifted by the resolution, and then we will continue to do the work that we do. I so appreciate receiving it on behalf of all the Black residents of the City of Santa Maria and Santa Barbara County and also Longbok because we are Santa Maria Longbok branch. And I would just like to say that even though we call this Black History, we know that Black history is American history 365 days of the year. So, thank you so much, and thank you for everyone that was present on Saturday. We may have to reschedule the event on Saturday, and if we do, it would be the following Saturday, and that's due to rain. But again, thank you so much, and you all have a great, great evening.
And thank you, Lawanda, for doing such a great job on that celebration. Very much appreciated and very much enjoyed. Our next item is also a proclamation, and Councilmember Aguilera Hernández will be making the presentation.
Whereas International Women's Day was first honored in Austria, Denmark, Germany, and Switzerland in 1911, and whereas in 1977, the United Nations General Assembly adopted a resolution calling on member states to proclaim a day for women's rights and international peace, and each year issues a proclamation calling on all individuals to observe March as National Women's History Month. And whereas International Women's Day is observed around the world and provides an opportunity to recognize and reflect on the progress made to advance women's equality, to celebrate the gains made by women in society, and to reflect on the challenges and barriers which women continue to face. And whereas women's access to education, health care, and paid labor has improved, and legislation that promises equal opportunities for women and respect for their human rights has been adopted in many countries. Now therefore, the Mayor Alice Patino from the City of Santa Maria hereby recognizes March 8th, 2023 as International Women's Day in the City of Santa Maria, and encourage all residents and businesses to celebrate with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. And when is thereof, she has hereon to set her hand and cause the seal of the City of Santa Maria to be affixed hereto this 21st day of February 2023. And this is going to be accepted by Dr. Lada Murdy on behalf of Santa Maria Valley Women's March.
Ms. Murdy, would you like to say a few words? Yes.
On behalf of Women's March Santa Maria Valley and also the Santa Maria branch of AAUW, the American Association of University Women, I want to wholeheartedly thank Councilmember Aguilera Hernández and Mayor Patino and the City of Santa Maria for this proclamation. With this proclamation, you are recognizing that the City of Santa Maria stands with and for all women everywhere, which is the theme for Women's March Santa Maria Valley in 2023, for all women everywhere. And in honor of International Women's Day on Wednesday, March 8th, Santa Maria Public Library will be holding a program with Women's March Santa Maria Valley and with the Santa Maria branch of AAUW, the American Association of University Women. It is a program called Women, Life, and Freedom: Women in Iran. It is about the women's movement in Iran, featuring a speaker, Dr. Gulnaz Nagahi. And we invite everyone to come to that program on International Women's Day, Wednesday, March 8th, 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Santa Maria Public Library. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Our next item on the agenda this evening is a presentation of the Businesses of the Month, and Councilmember Soto will be presenting the certificates along with Chamber CEO Glenn Morris. Good evening, Mr. Morris.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. It's a pleasure to be back again this month with our businesses that we're going to recognize tonight. As is our pattern, we have two businesses to recognize this evening. And this year, we're recognizing a, I got to find a better way to describe this, longstanding, a pioneer business in our community, businesses that have been in our community for long periods of time and a continuous operation. And then our second category is highlighting businesses in our health care sector. I wish I could say that I was smart enough to have organized the fact that the representatives of both businesses tonight were women in honor of the proclamation for International Women's Month, but I think that's just happy coincidence and maybe a reflection of where the leadership in our community is anyway.
You got that one right.
Got that one right. So, let me first introduce our longstanding business, and that is the Santa Maria Times. And with me tonight is Terry LaFiesta, who is the publisher of the Santa Maria Times, as well as a number of other local papers in our region. The Times is one of the oldest businesses in the Santa Maria Valley. They have been chronicling local news in our region since 1882, and continue to strive today to bring local news, lifestyle, and of course, sports coverage for our kids to us and to our neighbors even today. As I said, the first edition of the paper was published on April 22nd, 1882, and they have published uninterrupted since that time. Thought it was interesting, the first edition of the Times, the headlines talked about the completion of railroad lines connecting our community both to the north as well as to the Southern California region, as well as stories about land available to people who wanted to move to a burgeoning new community. I think we're still having that conversation today, right? The Times obviously has continued to grow and change, and while they continue to offer a print product that can show up in your mailbox, they also now have web-optimized resources, digital media, the social media. Wherever we as consumers look to find information, they're trying to make sure that there's a quality product available to us in that medium. The Times today here in our community employs 30 individuals, and have grown from covering one community to now covering multiple communities in the northern Santa Barbara and southern San Luis Obispo regions. So, with that, I'd like to introduce the publisher of the Times, Terry LaFiesta. Terry?
Thank you. Appreciate that. I'm honored to be here, and we've been here 140 years, so that's a pretty long time. We hope to be here a long time more. We really appreciate, we're here because of the support of this community, and we really appreciate that, and we really appreciate being honored tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
You bet. Our second business, our health care business this month, is Santa Maria Counseling. Now, I think often when we think of health care businesses, we tend to think of large programs like the hospital and other clinics and the medical community, and those are certainly important aspects. But there are a number of small businesses in our community who also are making sure that the health care needs of our community are met a day in and day out, and today, we're going to recognize one of those. With me today is Greta Pancratz, who is the owner of Santa Maria Counseling. They have been in business since, or she's been in business since 2010, providing counseling and trauma services to individuals in our community. I thought this was an interesting description. It says that she provides one-on-one therapy to many of our peers and the people who serve our community. By doing so, firefighters are able to stay at their job, doctors are able to remain in the hospital, police officers return to patrol, and nurses can be attentive to us while they're at work. She also provides crisis debrief and support services for many other agencies in our community. Our community would suffer if those agencies were not able to be fully staffed because their people were not able to return to work due to trauma or mental health concerns. In addition to all of that, she is a recognized state expert, providing training and consultation to therapists around the state of California, and was ahead of the curve, offering telehealth services in 2019. So, she looked around the corner and figured out this was going to be a thing, right? You saw it coming, right? Yeah, indeed, kind of predict. In addition to all of that, if that's not enough, she is a mom to three and a wife to a husband who has returned to school recently. So, that I'm sure has created all kinds of scheduling issues around the home. And a volunteer coach, currently is coaching volleyball for fifth and sixth graders at Jimenez Elementary School.
First place right now.
First place. There you go. Mayor, members of the council, it's my pleasure to introduce Greta Pancratz.
Mind if I say a few things? Oh, we're going to do this. Thank you. While I have your ear, I just thought I'd make a call for empathy. I see a lot of medical personnel, doctors, nurses, police officers, first responders, firemen, and whatnot. And the people in those jobs right now are exhausted. The last three years has been exhausting. While a lot of people were able to be at home and work a little bit less during COVID, medical and first responders worked more through COVID, and it hasn't really stopped because of staffing as well with COVID kind of ending. So, if your doctors are canceling on you, if it's hard to get in right now, if first responders seem a little bit tired or impatient with the work that they're doing right now, just be patient. People are tired right now, so I thought I'd make a call for empathy as a community, as we, yeah, we're recovering from an exhausting three years. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morris, and congratulations, Ms. Pancratz, and thank you for the service that you provide here in our city. The next item on the agenda this evening is the public comment period. Madam Clerk, could you please read the criteria for the public comment period of the agenda?
This time is reserved to accept comments from the public on consent agenda items, closed session items, or matters not otherwise scheduled on the printed agenda this evening. Unless otherwise directed by the mayor, speakers will have three minutes to comment. Direction to staff may be given, however, state law does not allow action to be taken on matters not on the printed agenda. Once the public comment period commences, no other speakers will be allowed to submit a request to speak form. And Madam Mayor, before we begin, I have one public comment from a member of the audience. Then, at this point, no one has raised their hand in Zoom, but I also wanted to inform you of a written communication that we received from Clayton Long, asking that the city investigate weekly vehicle break-ins taking place on Biscayne Street between Sonia Lane and Carmen Lane.
Thank you.
And we do have a hand in Zoom.
We have a hand in Zoom. Okay. I'll call on Mr. Gary Hall. Good evening, Mr. Hall.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilmembers, staff, and citizens of Santa Maria. My name is Gary Hall. I'm a resident of Rancho Buena Vista Mobile Estates at 2135 North Railroad Avenue here in Santa Maria. I represent the North Santa Barbara County Mobile Homeowners Team, or NESBET. Repeating a little bit, we felt the stakeholder meetings conducted September 22nd and November 29th were beneficial and productive. We were invited to produce and submit our view of the critical unsolved issues. On January 9th, an overdue email was sent to the city's representatives from our attorney, Bruce Stanton. Included was a document titled "Mobile Home Lease Program: Homeowner's Summary of Issues and Proposed Solutions." Unfortunately, until just four hours ago, we had not received any feedback. We hope to soon start moving forward toward our overall goal, which is to provide protection to all Santa Maria mobile home residents presently living in an unregulated rental market, where the current model lease program has been ineffective in protecting homeowner equity and maintaining affordable mobile home housing. The next stakeholder meeting is scheduled for tomorrow, February 22nd, and the Santa Maria mobile home residents' representatives were anxious to learn what progress has been made. We were surprised to learn that tomorrow's meeting excludes representatives of the park owners. It's been five months since we last met with the mobile home park owner representatives, and we were hopeful to learn what they have done to meet the intent of the June 7th, 2022 motion, which reads in part, that motion reads in part, "to examine enhancing the model lease agreement to see if there was room for improvement and to look at alternatives." We believe we are doing our part. As required, we will continue explaining the before-mentioned homeowner summary of issues and proposed solutions. We will be available to assist the city with issues of communication, outreach, and enforcement. We look forward to working with the city, the park owners' representatives, as we jointly pursue and eventually succeed in satisfying the June 7th motion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, before we move on, we do have one speaker.
Yes.
Particularly in Zoom, but Ms. Serviano, did you want to speak on the performing arts center and not on public comment? Let me just confirm. Ms. Fran, can you confirm if you want to speak during public comment or during the performing arts item? Maybe she's on her phone. I'm sorry, just a moment.
That's okay.
Ms. Serviano, are you there? She might be on her phone. But the next speaker is Mr. Tim Mahoney of Southern California Gas Company.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Mahoney.
Good evening, Mayor. I hope you can hear me, members of the City Council.
Yes, we can hear you.
Tim Mahoney with Southern California Gas Company. Wanted to provide an update on the SoCal Gas high winter gas bills, and this has been on the top of the mind for many customers, and I know the City Council, because January bills of this year were higher than historically the average. So, market prices for natural gas has dropped for February, which is good news, but when you compare the high prices of January, we are still looking at prices for natural gas that are higher than they were last year. Now, this is because widespread below-normal temperatures in Washington, Oregon, California, Arizona. So, when these cold weathers hit, the demand for heating goes up. Unfortunately, there's been a reduced natural gas supplies to the West Coast from Canada and the Rocky Mountains, and reduced interstate pipeline capacity to the West Coast because of maintenance activities across the western borders. So, there's also low natural gas storage levels on the West Coast. So, my company, SoCal Gas, we buy the procurement of natural gas each month, and that reflects the price that we pay for the gas for residents and businesses. Now, we do not, and this is important to remember, SoCal Gas does not set the price for natural gas. We buy this on national and regional markets. Whatever we buy the gas for on the markets, we sell that to the customer, and the cost of the gas is not marked up, meaning SoCal Gas does not make a profit from the movement of gas on the commodity price. Now, a bit of good news coming up is that the Public Utilities Commission has approved a rebate coming in at $50.77, which residential customers are going to see on their February and March bills. So, I'm going to continue to inform and offer ways to help income-qualified customers through billing assistance, forgiveness programs, home improvement assistance, the Level Pay program, California alternative rates for energy folks should sign up for. This will give them a reduction on their natural gas bill. Also, we are delaying collection activities on overdue residential accounts until April, and there will be no disconnecting until July 1st, as residents will have an opportunity to pay these bills. So, for more information, there is SoCalGas.com Assistance, there is SoCalGas Manage Higher Bills, and I just encourage customers to perhaps lower the thermostat three to five degrees, heat permitting, wash clothes in cold water, reduce the temperature on the water heater if you can, and limit the use of non-essential natural gas appliances such as spas, pool heaters, and things of that nature. So, thank you very much for your time. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mahoney. Appreciate it. Go ahead.
Can we ask questions to the gentleman?
Is he still there?
Is he still on?
I'm here.
Oh, you're here. Yes. Ms. Soto has a question for you, Tim.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. You mentioned that SoCal Gas won't go through with collections until April, correct? Is that if the customer stops paying altogether, or even if they make small incremental payments?
Small incremental payments are always welcome.
But if they're not paying the full amount of their gas bill, will they still be sent to collections?
Not a residential customer, no.
Got it. And for disconnecting, I know you said through June, but that's not for residential, correct? Or does that include residential?
This is dealing with residential customers.
Okay, so they can still get disconnected in June?
I'm not understanding. Pardon me?
Can their services be disconnected if they don't pay?
The residential customer?
Yes.
There will become a time in the future if they do not pay their bill or respond to the gas company or contact us in some way to make arrangements. Yes, unfortunately, disconnection is possible.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mahoney.
Madam Mayor, Ms. Fran Serviano looks like she's jumped off of Zoom at this time, so I believe she wanted to speak during the other item.
So, that concludes the public comment portion of the agenda. Before we move on, Mr. Stillwell, did you have any comments?
I have comments on my gas bill, but you closed public comment right there. So, I will say that we did review that written correspondence the council received about criminal activity, and there is some criminal activity in that area. We didn't see the spike that the correspondent mentioned, and so we would just encourage people, if they're a victim of crime or a witness of crime, to contact police and report the crime. If they're a witness of a crime in progress or a victim of a crime in progress, to call 911. And if they see crime not in progress, they can call the non-emergency phone number at 805-928-3781. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. And it's really important, whenever you've been a victim of crime, to report it, because if it doesn't get reported, then the statistics at the end of the year don't appear what they are in actual reality. So, it's very important to call, and our police officers will respond. Thank you. Moving on to the consent calendar, Madam Clerk, could you please read the description?
Routine items are presented for City Council approval without discussion as a single agenda item in order to expedite the meeting. The consent calendar is approved by roll call vote with one motion. These items are discussed only on the request of councilmembers. Members of the public may speak on consent calendar items during public comment.
Members of the public may speak on consent calendar items during public comment.
I am going to ask to pull 10E. I need to abstain, because I recused myself last week.
Okay.
Do I need to step away from the dais? What's the vote?
Does anyone else have items they wish to pull?
No, Madam Mayor. If there are, if there aren't any other items that need to be pulled, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar with the exception of item 10E.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion to approve and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Soto.
Aye.
Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez.
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo.
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero.
Aye.
And Madam Mayor Patino.
Aye.
And 10E.
Yeah, okay.
For a separate vote?
Yes.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 10E on the consent calendar.
I need, I have a motion and a second to approve 10E. Any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Soto.
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero.
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo.
Wait, sorry. It's 10E?
Yes.
Which
The better idea to applaud than last week.
Oh, yeah, no.
Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez.
Abstain.
And Madam Mayor Patino.
Aye.
Next, we have a public hearing. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will consider approving the Measure A Five-Year Local Program of Projects for Fiscal Years 2023 through 2028.
Staff report is to be made by the Director of Public Works, Mr. Folgony.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and the public. Tonight, we have a brief presentation for you on Measure A and its role in providing critical funding for the city's road infrastructure and sidewalk infrastructure. We'll start with a brief history of the sales tax, review how Measure A fits into the overall city budget, and end with a discussion on the city's proposed five-year program of projects. So, a quick background on Measure A. It's a one-half cent sales tax approved by voters in 2008, approved in Santa Maria with a 79% majority. It's a 30-year program, which expires in 2040, $1 billion in transportation-specific purposes countywide. There's, when the voters passed Measure A, they also committed to a funding structure that allocates a certain amount of monies from Measure A to specific projects and a certain amount of money to both North County and South County. So, as you can see, 13.3% of the funds goes to those named projects, and 43% of the funds is divided among the North County, with Santa Maria being in that pot. So, here's just a quick pie chart breakdown of the different funding sources that we have for both road maintenance and enhanced roadway maintenance. So, this is everything from our streetlights to the landscaping for some of the trees, the tree maintenance, the labor that goes into the day-to-day operations for the city. And as you can see, Measure A is our largest fund. The green space that you see for the general fund was the additional contribution that the council made this last, in this past year. So, prior, the prior pie chart, you would have just seen the maintenance of effort in Measure A without the green space from the general fund, and so we wanted to call that out. So, Measure A in this pie chart represents $6.7 million, which is an increase of 16.7% year-over-year. The table on the screen shows the city's Measure A program of projects for the next five-year period. At the top, it shows forecasted revenues and their totals, along with any carryovers, so monies that we've saved over the year. Total revenues for the five-year program is $37 million. The bottom section of the table shows the different programs and projects that will be funded in Measure A. In addition, it shows the actual expenditures for FY 2122. The descriptions of these projects are as follows. Roadway maintenance and improvements, landscaping maintenance, then we have traffic safety, which includes signage replacements and improvements, pavement delineations, street lighting maintenance and improvements, street lighting upgrades in underlit neighborhoods, and traffic signal maintenance and improvements. As you can see, our annual allocation for Measure A funds is just over $7 million for the next five years. The key part of the program is allocation to what is called alternative transportation. It's a requirement of the program to each participating agency. And City of Santa Maria's responsibility for alternative transportation is 15% of the total spend. And so, the programs that we do, so if you look across the street, if you came in this evening, looked across the street, we have some sidewalks that are being repaired up. On the other side of McClellan Street, that's an example of Measure A funding. The programs that the city has in place for alternative transportation include safe routes to school, ADA facilities, programs in education, incentives to reduce single-occupant auto trips, and total required spending on alternative transportation over the five-year period is $5.5 million as of today. Here's just a brief look at a lot of the self-performance that our crews do, and we're undertaking efforts through the last budget to increase that. But just some example of our day-to-day work at Measure A funds. And one more slide to follow up. We would love to see more of that. And that concludes my report. I'm available for any questions. The recommendation is to hold the public hearing, take public input on the Measure A local program of projects, and adopt a resolution approving the Measure A five-year local program of projects for fiscal years '23, '24, through '27, '28.
Thank you, Mr. Folgony. Are there any questions from the council?
No questions.
Ms. Soto, you got a question?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I see that on the alternative transportation expenditures for programs, education, and incentives, we have that at $10,000. As the budget or as the revenue is growing due to sales tax, is that something we would also be able to adjust to support the community agencies that are providing those services to the city?
Yeah, that's a good point. That's a very good point.
Because that amount is staying fixed throughout the next five years?
Yeah.
And as inflation continues to go up, I would say that the cost to provide these services will also go up. So, is there a way that we can make that edit on this, or is this not possible at this time? Yeah, so I don't know if there are any council members who would be in favor of that.
You're talking about the programs, educational incentive?
And what organization is the one receiving those funds currently?
SB Bike. There's others, but they're majority, they do a majority of our outreach.
I would support.
I would support.
Mr. Stillwell?
Yeah, it'd be appropriate this time if the council does want to make programmatic changes to provide that direction, and we can include it in the upcoming budget. On this item, the primary goal is to approve the five-year plan and assure that there is sufficient funding in the MO and the maintenance of effort, but if there are particular programmatic changes the council wants, we could take those as a direction, as direction as well.
Yeah, I mean, what's the percentage increase for, for what we're spending on, like, traffic safety and, I mean, I feel like with the maintenance, that would probably not, that won't be as good in enough comparison, but I don't know if there, in looking at this just now, what the percentage increase has been or will be between year after year, and perhaps that's how we calculate
Yeah.
A percentage increase.
Roughly 10%, and if you look at landscape maintenance, that was adjusted upwards, 55 to 60 as well. So, we can, we can certainly
A 10% increase for programs in education?
Yep.
Year after year?
I would support that.
So, what do we do right now in programs and education?
So, SB Bike currently goes around to the schools, and they promote, so we promote EC Centro, which is the bike shop in town, and then they, we'll take these bikes and go around to different schools and educate children about riding bikes, having helmets, safety, all those sorts of things that SB Bike tries to encourage, yeah, and subsidize repair, doing
And so, the objective then is to reduce single-occupant auto trips?
Essentially.
Okay, and so, we see this, we have our, we have buses, and we have people that hardly ride our buses, and I just think we live in a community, and I'm all for the education. We live in a community where, depending if, you know, in an ag community, depending if it rains or not, whether people even go to work that day, and so their peoples, or they may work in a different field or a different area if it rains too much, and it just seems, we've been trying to get people into the buses, into public transportation, and it's not that workable in Santa Maria. I don't mind, you know, educating people more on that.
Yeah, and, I mean, going back to the point of the services that, for instance, that agency provides, Santa Barbara Bike Coalition, my understanding is that, as was mentioned, they go into the elementary schools, they provide bike safety courses in the schools, outside of the school, and in a city, and I don't know if our police chief or fire chief may have this information, but we do, we have a lot of accidents with bicyclists and automobiles, and you've seen that even with Santa Maria bus, you know, and bicyclist accidents, and so anything that we can do to really promote safety when it comes to biking safely in the city of Santa Maria, especially as we're adding all of these bike lanes and really trying to interconnect the city through the active transportation plan, education and information is a key component, and starting that at a young age is key. And so, if that comes to about $1,000 per year of an increment, I, I mean, in comparison to how much money in revenue is coming in, it should be somewhat feasible, and it aligns with the percentage increase that we're allocating to all of the other services that we're seeing on this, on this chart.
Mr. Escobedo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Have a question in regards, this $10,000, if we go back, has there been any change in terms of, has it been always $10,000, or has there been increases?
For the reason, the reason passed, yes, it's been $10,000.
It's been?
Yeah.
Okay, so, yeah, that's, you know, with inflation and everything that it's going on, I think, I would, I mean, I concur with Councilwoman Soto that education is key and to prevent, first, the people that ride bicycles do not become a hazard at the same time, not just, it's to protect who's driving, but also who's driving a bicycle, and we do, we're pretty behind in Santa Maria, so, and I think that's a $1,000 increase, and $5,000 in five years, it's a, I would, I would support that increase.
So, are you all looking for a, to adopt a resolution with those changes, if that's what the council wishes?
That's fine. I'd like to ask, we have, when we talk about sidewalks and where the maintenance, repair, construction, improvements of, oh, yeah, citywide index, my understanding, you've gone through the city to figure out where we need to improve the sidewalks, because we have several areas in the north, say, the northwest area of town where there are no sidewalks at all. They don't even need improving. There aren't any, it's just dirt. So, and that's all part of the index here, and that we're going to be doing those improvements?
Yeah, the index has morphed into a presentation on its own. When we initially envisioned the index, we thought, okay, let's do the index the same as we do the roads, and the index is not a normal thing for cities to do, and so we've actually had to create a base layer for us to input information, and we come to expect the index is going to be a ongoing maintenance activity. It's going to be sort of integrated into our operations department, where we have a program where we go out and survey and then fix those areas. The way we are looking at that is we're trying to prioritize different areas in the city that take, that we know take a lot of pedestrian volume, and try to address those areas first so that we're spending our first dollars in the most appropriate way. So, it's difficult for me to say, yes, we're just going to go out and do an index, whereas really this is going to morph into a maintenance program.
Prioritizing, and that's fine. It's just that we have a lot of mothers, mothers that walk their kids to school, and they've got strollers, and there's, you know, maybe half a block of no sidewalk at all.
We just recently completed a sidewalk on College Avenue in front of the cemetery. That was one area. It had no sidewalk. We installed that sidewalk from, went from Battles, I think went from Battles to Stole, yeah, so, on the west side.
Another thing that I, has been brought to my attention, we have a lot of our older streets on the west side of town that don't get the maintenance that other streets do that are in a landscape district. So, I guess my, how do we connect that with the landscape district so we are taking care of those streets, because some of those streets haven't been touched in eons?
Yeah, so, the roads that are in the landscape district, the landscape district specifically addresses the planter areas that are within that roadway, and that could include the median. So, having areas in special benefit zones that encompass that is why we are able to fund the landscaping of those areas. We can't actually fund the roadwork of those areas, but we can fund the landscaping, so it gives that perception of, you know, where we're out there working, doing things. We will be bringing back a presentation for you that will include all of our roads with the SB 1 update. We'll be showing you which roads we're going to be working on this year, which roads we're going to be working on next year, so that you can have a better picture of how these funds will be presented on a, you know, day-to-day basis.
Okay, because I was, you know, I've been approached by people that are, that are living in some of the older parts of town, and their streets haven't been done in a long time, and of course, with, I know the weather, we had last month, we had a lot more potholes coming forward, yeah. Any other questions? Okay, oh, Mr. Cordero.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Brett, would you explain the, what Councilwoman Soto was asking for, the mechanics of that transition that we would do with the funds, deferring allocated funds to a new source?
Not sure I understand your question.
Well, she wants to take extra money that's perceived to be, going to be extra money, and reallocate it to another service.
Sure.
Okay, how is that going to happen, and is it final? I like the idea, but we're assuming that that's where the funds are going to need to go. Things can change, and I dearly like the idea of protecting the people, the biking traffic, but I don't know what could change, but if the need is greater somewhere else, and we've already reallocated those funds, and we had to change that and then change it again, I don't, what are you going to have to do? What are we going to have to do on the council's level in order to make it happen? And how final is it?
With the, with the programs and the educational item, it's $10,000 a year. The total program budget over five years is $37 million. I would think that it may be a pothole or two less, right? And really, in the scheme of things, it's, it's something that we can certainly look at on a staff level and figure out, okay, what would be a reasonable amount here to allocate to support the council's direction? So, it's, and this will move forward to SB CAG, to their, to their budget recommendation, and we can make that recommendation to SB CAG, and then bring it back in the midyear.
Do you know what the cost is to fix a pothole these days?
I think our bags are 50 bucks, about 50 bucks a pothole, more or less.
Because I know that we're doing, we're doing more than, it says that the Measure A requires the city to allocate 15% of its local share of Measure A to pedestrian and bicycle improvements, and I know that we're doing more than that, but I think to Ms. Soto's point is that make sure that we get the education to, especially to the kids.
Sure. And keep in mind And keep in mind that the Measure A is a piece of our total funding structure. And so with the, we also do work with our grant funding. We have, we have a grant that we were awarded for alternative transportation. It's about an $8 million grant. And then there's also the CDPG funding that we do to support sidewalk development and repair in certain areas of town that are qualified for that funding. So.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Escobedo?
Yeah, just a question, Councilmember Cordero, we're mentioning about, kind of like the priorities, that kind of like the, kind of like, at the end of the day, what's going to be kind of like the priority? Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
We want to know what, I want to kind of know what, once we decide we're going to do something, are we stuck on that, for lack of a better term? And is there something we've got to do every year, or is it just a one-time, that money is reallocated, we now have it in a new fund, basically?
Yeah, the program or projects comes back at this time every year. And so if we do see a changing environment, we can make those adjustments the same way that we're doing today. So next year, at this time, hopefully I'll be coming back to you with the next five-year recommendation, and we'll be able to consider that over again.
What is our street index?
PCI. We're about 60, I think we're 63, we've actually dropped a couple of points. But we are going to be doing a lot of work this year focusing on our materials and collectors. So you'll be seeing a lot of roadwork. And as I mentioned, in May, we should have a full presentation for you on exactly what roads we're going to be doing this year and next year, so that you can understand.
Okay, yes, Mr. Escobedo?
Yeah, and the index, because I remember that we discussed about, we're, so the idea is to know, basically, kind of like an index, the one that we have for the roads, but also now for the sidewalks. Is that right?
Yeah, the sidewalk index will take some time for us to develop, we're creating it from scratch. There's, there's nothing we can pick off a shelf. We initially thought we were going to be able to take a consultant and plug them in. The city of Oakland did that for 400 and something thousand dollars. And then they surveyed the entire city, and what we wanted to avoid is surveying the entire city and then not being able to take action on it. We want to make sure that whatever we're surveying, we can take action on, and then from there, gauge how much of the city we can survey each year. Because in our PCI, as we do the PCI, we only survey a quarter of the city. It's a sample of the overall, we don't look at every single street. And so the PCI, you know, we have, the engineering team is going to create that algorithm that, we've created the base layers in StreetSaver, we've created the base layers, which didn't have a sidewalk index portion before, and now they're creating it. So there's all these different tools that we're using to create this index. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions right now? Okay, Madam Clerk, are there, I'd like to open up for a public hearing. Do we have any requests to speak?
No, Madam Mayor, we do not, and no one has their hand up in Zoom on this item.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing and bring this item back to the council for any further discussion and a motion.
Thank you, Madam.
Oh, so Mr. Stillwell, regarding Miss Soto's request, do we have to add that amount to the, to that area?
Yeah, I think if the, you can add it to the recommendation, to the resolution, and if you add the focus that the council has, then that gives us the discretion to balance overall numbers to meet that.
Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion
Okay.
to adopt the staff recommendation while adjusting the programs and education incentives to reduce single occupant auto trips or transportation's demand by $10,000 per year. And approving the Measure A five-year local, oh no, well, that includes what the recommendation, right? I move forward. I want, I want to make a motion adopting the recommendation with the adjustment of the programs and education.
To include a 10% increase.
10% increase per year.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second.
Thank you.
Do I hear any further discussion? Harry Nunn, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye. Next, we have a regular business item. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will review Resolution 201817, Citywide Governance by District: Elected Policy and Reaffirm Its Intent to Continue Its Practice of Governing with a Citywide Perspective Following the Shift to Elections of Councilmembers by Council Districts.
And the staff report is to be made by City Manager, Mr. Stillwell.
Sure, thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. The City Council adopted a citywide resolution of governance back in February of 2018. That was the first biannual goal-setting session of the City Council after the, as district elections were coming into play. The City Council's focus at that point was, even though council members will be elected by district, that the focus should still be governing citywide. And so the conclusion reached by the City Council was that all members would, all members of the City Council would continue to serve all the people of Santa Maria. The City Council adopted the minutes of that workshop in 2018, which adopted the resolution. The principles of it were, with the City Council governing at an at-large basis, considering the needs and interests of the entire community. The City Council wishes to remain united in its service to the community as a whole, that any member of the City Council will help anyone in the community who calls or contacts them, customer service being the priority, professional management and a strong city manager form of government will continue with all the best management practices that the City Council expects now, and resources being allocated based on needs and expertise, and that current practices regarding invitations to members on the City Council to events and activities and appointments to committees and various bodies will remain in effect. And the City Council reaffirmed that resolution of governance at their February 2020 goal-setting, as well as the February 2022 goal-setting. I would add, since the council did adopt this resolution, we have had a number of other inquiries from other cities, curious and following the lead of the city of Santa Maria, including the League of Cities at the most recent league event that we attended in January. And that concludes my report. It's an opportunity here for the City Council to review, reaffirm, or to comment on the resolution of governance that is in place.
Thank you, Mr. Stillwell. Any questions of Mr. Stillwell?
No.
Okay, Madam Clerk, do we have any correspondence or requests to speak?
No, Madam Mayor, we do not.
I'll bring this item back to the council for discussion and to reaffirm our intent to govern citywide. Do I have a motion? Oh, Mr. Cordero.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I just feel it's appropriate to mention that there was a lot of discussion at that time, as you would remember, and certainly we have Councilwoman Waterfield to thank for that. She, along with myself, was not really in favor of the districting that we, that caused us to do this. And it was her recommendation that, okay, we'll get elected that way, but we're going to govern the city so that we're not getting into this issue of, well, that's not my district, you got to go talk to someone else. And customer service, as Mr. Stillwell said, is key here, that we're able to address things. And of course, the polite thing to do would be, for, in my case, to contact a councilperson, Escobedo, and say, hey, I got a call from Bob in your district, and this is what I told him, and if he chooses to do something, or change it, or add to it, or contact Bob, he can do that, so he can certainly deal with one of his constituents on a first-name basis. And it was largely due to the pursuit of, at a Waterfield, that we were able to all agree on that. And I've heard comments from people at other cities about wanting to go to this as well. I would certainly be in favor of doing it, and unless somebody has something else to say, I would make that in the form of a motion.
Okay, I have a motion.
I'll second.
And a second. Madam Clerk, do we, would you please take the roll on that?
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez?
Aye.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye. And I also have heard different people, because we've commented just in conversations, and they said, I'd like to see that, because we need to do that. And I think it's really good to affirm that every time we have a new person on the council. Our next item is another regular business item. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will consider approving a professional services agreement with the Santa Maria Valley Chamber of Commerce to conduct a feasibility study for a potential Santa Maria Performing Arts and Convention Center.
And the staff report is to be made by Assistant City Manager, Mr. Hackelman.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. Today, we'll be presenting this regular business item on a potential performing arts and conference center study. So it's a feasibility study. And in this briefing, we'll go through background, discussion, and the recommendation to council. By way of background, fairly recently, back in 2021, the Santa Maria Philharmonic formed a committee of local residents to explore the development of a PAC. So that's, you know, the acronym for the Performing Arts and Conference Center. This quickly morphed into somewhat of a larger idea. So multiple businesses were surveyed, kind of trying to test for the desire or the need for such a space. And it was quickly discovered, and certainly upon the formation of this committee by those that were interested initially, that there was a lack of suitable venues for conference and performance space in the city of Santa Maria. And the city of Santa Maria Philharmonic has only one venue in which to perform, and it is considered to be undersized. And there is a need generally, from an economic development and tourism perspective, to increase the city of Santa Maria's competitiveness within the region and within the state of California. The City Council also, and the reason that we think this could have some importance here is that the City Council priority to provide more recreation opportunities for families ties into this significantly, because of the importance of events and performances to recreation for people in the city of Santa Maria, but also to those who may visit from our local area and our region, but also from elsewhere in the state and out of state. And then the next step that was the result of this committee's actions and activities was to have a feasibility study performed. And I'll talk to you a little bit about the idea for that and some of the rationale. So in our discussion here, the idea was to determine, you know, from the committee's perspective, a PAC seemed like it could be a good idea, the potential for it, but really there needs to be a feasibility to study to truly determine if a PAC should be developed in Santa Maria, and if so, where. So such a study would consider lots of things, like the location, what types of events would be performed there, how many people should it accommodate, and would it make economic sense from a market perspective? So a market study to determine, does this make sense for a lot of different reasons? And also in this, there was kind of envisioned, say, a ballroom and an exhibit hall, just as kind of a guess, looking at what currently exists in Santa Maria, but also the region, because there are not a lot of performance centers that are in our area in these two counties, with an 800 to 12-person, 800 to 1,200-person capacity for performances, conferences, and events. Fiscal considerations for this study, and again, this is just a feasibility study, this is not a plan to design a center or to take any action, it is merely to look at if and where such a facility could or should be developed. And so the fiscal considerations for this would include a cost ceiling, so no more all-in, all costs related to administration, the study itself and the analysis of $94,250. And coming from economic development account, budgeted in the 2022, 2024 fiscal year, the impact to the community is estimated to be positive, because the purpose of the study is to determine the feasibility of a PAC, and it's aligned with council, the council goal of providing more recreation opportunities for family. Additionally, at core, while this did originate from a committee that was formed by the Santa Maria Philharmonic, fundamentally, this is an economic development initiative, because it would not just be for a Philharmonic, it would be for visiting entertainers, it would be for potentially local theatrical groups, it would be for business conferences, all manner of things that one would imagine, where large gathering of, gatherings of people would need accommodation, that would be what this type of facility would be used for, and that's what this study would look at. So of course, there are always alternatives for the council to consider. The city could contract directly with a consultant. And so the recommendation, we'll discuss this, but the intention, because the Santa Maria Valley Chamber of Commerce, we contract them with, for economic development initiatives, and because we've determined this to be fundamentally an economic development activity, that that will be seen later in the recommendation, but the city certainly could contract directly with a consultant to perform this feasibility study. And the city and staff would act as the project and contract manager. The benefit of this alternative would be that the city would lead the study effort and have the opportunity to control all aspects of what's happening with the study. However, as I mentioned, the City Council contracts with the Santa Maria Valley Chamber of Commerce for economic development, and the PAC is a economic development initiative. So the recommendation from staff is to adopt a resolution approving professional services agreement with the Santa Maria Valley Chamber of Commerce to conduct a feasibility study for a potential Santa Maria PAC. And with that recommendation, this concludes the presentation to council. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions of Mr. Hackelman?
Yes, you mentioned that there is an opportunity to contract directly with a consultant. Do we have a list of those consultants? Do we have options?
There are options. If the city were to perform this contract oversight and administration on its own, we would go out for bid and look at different options. The Chamber of Commerce has already performed that function, it has found a potential vendor to provide that service, a consultant to provide that service.
Do we have the name of that consultant?
I do. Do you have the, it's on my phone, I apologize.
Councilwoman Mayor, the recommended consultants, actually a team of consulting, consultants, it's a company called AEA Consulting and RIO, which is their public outreach component. As Assistant City Manager mentioned, we did an RFP on this, I think we've reached out to eight or 10 different organizations. This was by far the best and most qualified. They're not local, but this is a fairly specialized area of analysis, and their background is in arts and convention spaces.
Yeah, I saw that in the packet. Do they have experience with Santa Maria? You said they're a new?
Not directly, no.
Mr. Escobedo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I have a question, Mr. Morrison, Glenn. And what kind of, what are you, what was kind of like the parameters that you guys take in consideration when choosing this particular company?
So ultimately, we were looking for a firm that had experience in working with communities, including communities of our size, in determining whether a facility made sense for that community, and then figuring out, you know, what elements could be built into it, what those costs would end up being, and then would also be able to help with, you know, assuming that there's a path forward, that they'd be able to help us identify potential funding streams that would, you know, move us down that path. So we really were looking for folks that had been in this kind of cultural facility, consulting, design and development in the past.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, I know that there weren't very many people to select from. I was trying my best to find, because we- I was trying my best to find, because we, a study was done, I'm going to say 10 years ago, 12 years ago, 15, I don't know, and I couldn't find it anyplace. And Mr. Morris couldn't find it either. And at the time, they said, "Not yet," that this wasn't a good time, and that was a few years ago, because we were much smaller at the time, that potentially out there looked like Santa Maria would be a good place, because there isn't any place for the symphony actually to perform unless they go up to Poly. I don't know if the Clark's, is the stage of the Clark Center even big enough for the symphony? I didn't, don't think so. Probably Robert can answer that better. But anyway, so it was, it just felt like it was a great need, but at the time, which was like, like I said, I can't remember how many years ago, it just wasn't quite ready yet. But check in about 10 years from now, and I think we're at that juncture now. Anyway, Madam Clerk, oh, did you want to ask a question here?
Yeah, I know that we're looking at contracting out with the Chamber of Commerce so that they can be the ones overseeing this feasibility study, in essence. When it comes to the different phases in which they're going to be conducting this feasibility study, I see that they're looking at stakeholder engagement interviews. And so my question to city staff will be, how will the city also partake in promoting those engagement interviews and making sure that we have ample representation from all walks of life in those, in those interviews or in those stakeholder meetings?
That's a great question, Councilmember Soto. So in the chamber's role as our economic development partner, you know, the city would be a key component of the effort to, as this study is performed. And we would ensure that we reach out to the different members of our community, utilizing both our own internal communications function that we do for, you know, our different meetings and such. We would also leverage the chamber and ensure that we get all of those inputs, as we would for any type of city type of activity. And I would also add that as this is ongoing, you know, the city will be part of the process. And once it's completed, the intention is to bring back, Mr. Morris will bring back the results of this feasibility study to the council and explain the results and recommendations.
If my, if my memory serves you right, I'm sure they'll interview each and every one of us, but you will also give them names and people and organizations. So it seems like it'll go out like a spider web almost, I guess, would be a best, good definition of that.
And then my other question in terms of the cost ceiling, I'm assuming that's like the max that we are willing to spend on this feasibility study? Will this be essentially amending the contract that we already have with the Chamber of Commerce in terms of like the grant funding that we give them? Or will they be, how will the chamber be compensated for staff time and capacity to oversee this feasibility study?
This, so Councilmember Soto, this resolution will approve a separate and new professional services agreement, and the funds would come from budgeted economic development funds that were approved by council for 2022 and 2024. However, our relationship with the chamber as our economic development arm would be functional in the kind of execution of this contract.
So the $94,250, that's all going, or that's the max? And the max that we're willing to spend on this study, but all of that is going to this consulting firm?
A majority of it is. You have something, Glenn?
Yeah, Councilmember, great question. There's about a 5% component of that number that would compensate a portion of our staff time. I would say we fully expect to match that 2 or 3X. We're going to spend a significant amount of time managing this, but there's a small piece there to help.
Yeah, and I would, go ahead.
Sorry, I was just going to say that whatever the administrative fee will be to, right, that that is included in this resolution if the council were to move forward with this.
Yeah, I did, I just saw the $94,000, and I did want to know how much of that the chamber was going to get compensated for their time. He did say that it was going to take a significant amount of time. So the $94,250, it would be good for me to know how much of that is going to the chamber and what other, if there is other extra cost.
Okay, yes, ma'am. We can ensure that that's included.
Go to Mr. Cordero.
I don't have anything else. I think it's a great idea to move forward with it. I couldn't think of any reason not to.
Madam Clerk, do we have any correspondence or requests to speak?
Madam Mayor, we do not have any correspondence. We do have Mr. Morris and Mr. Dickerson here in the building, and then Ms., Serre.
Okay.
Yeah, so if I could, Ms. Severino was having some connection issues earlier.
Oh, okay.
She is on the phone. Do you have her? It's the 0400.
Okay.
Perhaps we could have her speak first.
Yeah, let's have her speak first.
Okay, will you go ahead and press star six? There you go. Let's see.
Hello?
Oh, there we go.
There we go.
Hi. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you very much for letting us talk with you this evening. My name is Fran Savariano. I'm the executive director of the Santa Maria Philharmonic Society. And along with our board, musicians, patrons, and supporters, we've long dreamed of a permanent home for the orchestra and are very grateful to the city of Santa Maria and the chamber for partnering with us on the committee to hopefully put together a feasibility study and maybe get this moving. As stated in the proposal for the feasibility study, the Santa Maria Philharmonic currently faces venue suitability and even availability challenges in the region. We don't have a suitable venue, and even the ones that we play in that aren't suitable, we have a problem with availability for those. So it's an ongoing issue. It's both in size and type. And the community faces lost business IPO and recreational opportunities due to a lack of suitable facilities as well. So I think this study will help move us along in that, and it is a good first step in determining whether or not, considering all these issues, to make sure we really need to move forward. We're very pleased with the prospect of doing the feasibility study and moving forward because we feel it will be a great thing for the community, it will fuel economic growth, encourage new business and visitors, and position Santa Maria as a business and arts destination for northern Santa Barbara County. And the proposal puts together all, puts forth all of this information in a very concise, readable way, and they've done a very good job of pulling all this information together and making a good, a good way to move forward on this. As described in the proposal, the events held at this new center will promote diversity, multicultural exchange, and support personal development for area residents. And again, thank you very much for listening to me this morning. I'm sorry for the problems with Zoom, and thanks, thanks for your time.
Thank you very much. Mr. Morris, would you like?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So I think you've gotten a good overview of what the objectives of this are about, but I think it's important to, just to drive home a quick point about the economic development linkage on this kind of a project. And as I see it, there are really probably four different specific things. First, from our tourism standpoint, you know, as Mr. Hackelman described the project, the goal is to create, is to determine whether this community would support a facility that would be dual use. So on the one side, it would, on the one purpose, it would be to be a home for the performing arts within our community. But on the other, we anticipate it would be a convention space of some sort, a place where professional meetings could be held. And we really see that as an opportunity to bring meetings, events, conferences into the community that we simply can't host today. If we have a professional meeting that exceeds about 250 to 300 people, we just don't have the facilities. When you think about, you know, general sessions and the ability to do breakouts into small group classes, we just don't have those kind of facilities in town. And so our ability to sell that kind of business is really limited. So that's one. We think that there's a significant market out there for folks that, you know, would want to meet in the middle of the state, on the coast, in a community that is, you know, welcoming and affordable, and we think that we could, we could sell that on a regular basis. You know, the second piece is, we think that this is an opportunity to encourage careers in the, in the arts. You know, Allen Hancock College does a great job of training working professionals in the performing arts, but there are very limited numbers of jobs available in that space in, not just our community, but across this region. And having an additional facility where those kinds of activities could take place, we think adds to that potential career pathway for young people in our community. The third is just that attractiveness of the community. One of the things that we hear as we're talking with folks who are either trying to recruit professionals into the community, or when we're trying to recruit an entire business, is, you know, one of the conversation points is, what is there to do in our free time? What are the cultural amenities that are available to people living in the community? And this would, this would absolutely enhance that. And then the other thing that we know from data that has been done, there was a study done by the Economic Development Collaborative in Ventura recently on what they called the creative economy, and the multiplier effect of, you know, dollars spent on those kinds of activities in the community are, you know, multiple X, you know, in terms of what they bring into the community, what they, what the dollars that stay in our community, right? So those are the reasons why we think it's, that this may be the time. It's certainly the time to decide if this is the time to build that kind of a facility in Santa Maria. Just to give you a quick sense of the scope, the consultants will help us in assessing potential site options. They will help us with identifying the building concepts, what are the pieces that would need to go into it to make it work. They would help with determining the potential for usage and the programming that would make, that would, that would work in this kind of a facility, and would help us develop kind of the business case, the financial case, if you will, in terms of, one, building it, and then, two, operating it into the future. You know, one of you asked the question about the Clark Center, and it is a beautiful facility, but it doesn't have the breakout spaces, right? It has the one, essentially, space, and it is significantly subsidized by a public agency, right? And I think many, you know, you look at the Performing Arts Center on the Cal Poly campus, that is a facility that is underwritten by the university, right? And so one of the things we want to determine is, is it possible to build a facility that could sustain itself, either through philanthropic sources or business operations? And so that's one of the things that we'll particularly be looking to understand in this, in this feasibility study. Councilman Soto, you asked about outreach into the community. Our intention would be to put a steering committee together that would oversee this project. We would intend to consult with the mayor and the city manager on the form, on the membership of that, and would anticipate that a representative of the city would be a full member of that steering committee to help us with those kinds of outreach efforts. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, or turn it over to my good friend, Robert.
Any questions of Mr. Morris? Okay, Mr. Dickerson?
Thank you, City Councilmember and Madam Mayor. I'll just, I don't want to drone on after Glenn gave his presentation and, you know, did a fine job with that, as well as staff. I just want to thank staff and the chamber and the other committee members. I'm on this committee that started off, my wife and I, with the thought of a performing arts center. And this has, over the last year, has morphed into a, into a business center as well, which I think is going to, as a member of the business community, I see enormous benefits to this down the road. Now, whether the feasibility study finds that we, that the community is ready for a performing arts and business center or not, I mean, it's good money spent to find out whether or not we are, or if we need to wait a few more years down the road. But this will allow this body, as well as the chamber and community members, to know categorically whether or not this is a good idea. One additional thing I will put to what Mr. Morris said, and that is that since before being on the planning commission, I think I've been on the commission since, was it 2010? Is that, is that when you were elected, Alice, first? I think so. Anyway, I have heard repeatedly that to draw business in, in industry, and to draw the people at the executive levels who are going to want to move here and to run these businesses and mid-level management, they need, they need housing that is commensurate with their own lifestyles, and they need entertainment, and they need an arts, they want arts as part of that. So from that standpoint, if, if the feasibility study were to find that a performing arts and business center was doable for this, this community, and if it was developed, it would certainly assist us in bringing, just another key component, part of the things that would possibly bring additional industry, additional jobs, additional executives, additional housing to this area and to the city of Santa Maria. So with that, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dickerson.
Sorry, one last, you asked about the fees, and I just did some quick math. The portion of that $94,000, whatever that is potentially available for admin, is $4,500.
Thank you.
And I don't need to tag. But, one interesting thing, Alice, or Madam Mayor, you had asked about the Clark Center. They have their own Philharmonic. Maybe they would let ours use it, and maybe not. So, anyway, they already have one.
I know the committee was talking about different, different groups that go from LA up to San Francisco, and how they could stop here in between, you know, and so be better. Excuse me, did you fill out, if you could fill out a yellow piece of paper, and you certainly can speak, uh-huh?
I'm sorry, I don't speak Spanish. Maestro Escobedo, usted me puede traducir?
Oh, do we have to?
He left.
Nomás son cinco palabras.
Okay.
San Luis Obispo tiene orquesta sinfónica. Santa Bárbara tiene orquesta sinfónica, y Santa María no tiene yo apoyo al maestro. Necesitamos una orquesta sinfónica aquí para que vengan tenores, sopranos, varitones, y mesosopranos. Si es que todos los que están aquí conocen los tenores, conocen todos los tonos de los hombres y todos los tonos de las mujeres, los felicito. Si no, busquen en el diccionario cuáles son estos, y entonces nos vamos a entender. Yo creo que él sí me entiende, y estos dos caballeros, porque ellos están apoyando al maestro. Una orquesta sinfónica necesita Santa María. Muchas gracias, señor.
Gracias, señor.
Gracias.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Escobedo.
Well, just letting you guys know that he's pretty supportive and applaud you guys.
And he said San Luis has a symphony and San Barbara.
When he pointed you guys, he said, "Good stuff," so he supports you, so. Just, I forgot what I was going to ask.
Go ahead.
Well, if there's, if there's no other comments, I would like to make a motion to adopt a resolution of approving a professional services agreement with the Santa Maria Valley Chamber of Commerce to conduct a feasibility study for the potential Santa Maria Performing Arts, Arts and Convention Center. And let me point out something that Mr. Glenn Morrison mentioned is, it's really important that he talked about, okay, let's see if it's feasible, and also if the convention, our center, will also be able to sustain itself, or how's it going to look like. So I'm really excited, and do you have?
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Mary Nunn, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Escobedo.
Hi.
Councilmember Cordero.
Hi.
Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez.
Hi.
Aye.
Councilmember Soto.
Aye.
Madam Mayor Patino.
Aye. Our next item is another regular business item. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will receive and file the financial report for the second quarter ending in, ending December 31st, 2022, and consider amendments to the 2022-2023 budget for operational changes.
And staff report is being made by Director of Finance, Ms. Harvey.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers, staff, and public. Tonight, I will briefly present the quarterly financial report for the second quarter ended December 31st, 2022. I will be primarily reviewing the general fund, including Measure U and Enterprise Funds. The beginning general fund balance of $10,071,000 is the unaudited balance at July 1st, 2022. Concerning revenues, sales tax receipts through December are nearly $2.3 million, or 15.8% greater than the second quarter last year. The increase is due to growth in all industry groups, with fuel and service stations showing the highest percentage growth, and general consumer goods showing the largest dollar increase. allocations from the county and state pools also had strong growth after having a decline in the previous quarter. These ren, these revenues generate, generated by out-of-state sales, including goods sold online to customers within the state. Property taxes received to date are $679,000, or 6.6% more than last fiscal year. The timing of property tax payments received from Santa Barbara County in December, January, April, and May accounts for these revenues lagging projections. Through September, transit occupancy tax, or TOT, receipts are approximately $114,000, or 5.8% more than last fiscal year, and are exceeding estimates by about $481,000, or 15.3%. The increase in revenues is due to the tourism industry's continued recovery from the pandemic, coupled with consumers viewing Santa Maria as a very viable lodging option with, when visiting the central coast. The TOT tax is estimated to generate about 5% of general fund revenues in 2223. Permit revenue is at 73.2% of budget, or about $2.3 million, and is about $679,000 greater than the second quarter of last fiscal year. Construction permit fees remain high and exceed estimates due to the high volume of permits issued for accessory dwelling units, including 104 for the second quarter. Permits were also issued for a new apartment complex, the Centennial Square, located at Miller Street and Plaza Drive, consisting of 184 affordable apartments. Turning to the general fund expenditure, they are at 43.7% of budget, and include 4.6 million, or about 6.5% in salary savings due to vacancies in most operational departments. Although the labor market has improved, finding and hiring qualified staff continues to be a challenge. For this reason, staff expects to achieve additional salary savings in the second half of the fiscal year. These budget savings, combined with the latest revenue estimates, are expected to eliminate the need for the 2.7 million leaf transfer that was budgeted to balance the budget. Concerning Measure U, through the second quarter, revenues are ahead of budget at 56%, or 14.4 million. Expenditures are at 39% of budget, or 3.7 million under budget. Most of the budget under end, 2.5 million, is in the fire department, and is primarily due to 4.6 million of budgeted capital projects and equipment purchases, of which only 250, 205,000 has been expended through the second quarter. The police department is under budget by about 759,000 due to vacant positions and planned capital purchases. Community development is under budget by 154,000 because of code enforcement vacancies. The library and recreation park, and parks programs are under budget by 134,900 and 151,800 respectively, because of difficulty in hiring and retaining staff, which hampers the department's effort to offer additional program. The budget in the city manager's office is for costs associated with maintaining the city's mass notifications system database, and the finance budget is for the annual independent audit of Measure U financial activity. Through December, 89% of Measure U expenditures have been spent on public safety, 6% on youth services, and 5% on quality of life. As for the enterprise funds, the water and wastewater fund revenues exceeded expenditures by 5.3 million. Revenues increased 3.1%, or 804,800 compared to the prior year due to higher revenues generated through increases in the city council-approved water rates and user fees. Expenses are 3.7 million less than last year, primarily due to lower debt service payments of 749,000 for the 2021A refunding bonds compared to the prior year's payment of 3.8 million for the 1997 Certificate of Participation and 2012A refunding bond. Water and wastewater operations expenses are under budget by 5.7% as a result of personnel savings and vac, from vacant positions, and the timing of payments of ongoing maintenance and contractual services agreements. For the solid waste fund, revenues exceeded expenditures by approximately 4.8 million as a result of operational costs being under budget by approximately 2.6 million, or 7.6%. Coupled with relatively low capital expenditures made during the first six months of the fiscal year. Compared to the prior year, revenues increased by 5.8 million, and expenditures decreased by 3.4 million. The transit fund second quarter revenues are more than expenditures by about 1.8 million. Fair revenue through the second quarter is approximately 288,000, which is about 71,000 less than fares earned through the second quarter of the prior year. This variance is attributed to fewer number of bus passes purchased by local school districts this year's, as districts restored school bus service. In addition, excuse me, in addition, the prior year, there were one-time purchases of bus passes from Allen Hancock College and other grant programs that allowed free Hancock College students to ride the bus free. Transit capital expenditures include 1.6 million for the purchase of two electric replacement buses, 114,900 for bus improvements, at, bus stop improvements, excuse me, and 94,300 towards transit fleet electrification infrastructure. The fare box ratio through December 31st, 2022 is 10.9% based on fares received and operating expenses recorded to date. In conjunction with the second quarter financial report, staff is recommending two budget items presented for council's consideration. This concludes my report, and I'm available for any questions.
Any questions of Ms. Harvey?
I have a question.
Ms. Soto.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a question regarding the Measure U fund, in particular with the city manager's office. Am I reading the number correct that we've spent 87.8% of the total budget for the year?
Yes. It's, it's for the database project, or, or 911 system. And so it's a, basically, we pay for that, for the year, in the first part of the year, and, but it's for the whole year. So it's, we don't prorate it. We, when we pay it, that's when we report it.
Do we foresee going over budget, or is that for that, for the city manager's office under Measure U, or are we done with those expenditures?
That should be the final payment of that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I guess.
Ms. Soto, go ahead.
My other question is, in just the, the year-to-date comparison to year prior, we have transfers out. Can you remind me what the transfers, transfers out are?
Transfers out can be for several different things. It's for other, it could be for programs that we support. So like, for example, we support the street, street funds. There's a portion that we transfer out to them for that. There's transfers out for CDBG. I'm trying to think of all the different ones that are in my head right now. And there can be some to the Capital Projects Fund, if there was a transfer out for that specifically. Let's see, what other ones do we have? We had four, we, I don't have that one anymore. That one went away. I just thought of another one. But there's several different ones that we have for, that are for operating transfers. There can be cop, capital transfers out as well. That hopefully answered your question. I'd get more detail if you'd like.
No, that's, that's good. May I ask one?
Yes, go ahead.
Question. It's, it's regarding the transit funds. I know you mentioned in your report that the, what was it, the adventure bus program, that we've seen a lower number or a decreased number of, of those purchased by, by local school districts. Is there, is there a way in which, well, is that tied to the adventure bus program? The, 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 the bus, oh no, these are bus passes that are purchased by the local school districts, not so much tied to the adventure bus program?
Right.
Got it.
There's, the adventure bus program is a separate grant that is done, and those are purchased using grant funds versus collecting it from patrons that are actually going on the bus. But yes, the, the school, the district still buys bus passes, but they've reduced them significantly compared to the previous year.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mary Nunn, do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Do I have a second?
Second. Oh, oh, that's right.
Oh, yeah, public comment.
I forgot.
It's okay. We have no requests to speak.
No requests to speak. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, I have, I have a motion and a second.
I'm sorry, I did not catch who made the motion.
I made the motion.
Thank you.
Yeah. No, no further discussion. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Second.
Oh, I seconded. Sorry.
Sorry. Councilmember Escobedo.
Hi.
Councilmember Soto.
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero.
Aye.
Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez.
Aye.
And Mayor, Madam Mayor Patino.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Watson. The next item will be a report by City Manager, Mr. Stillwell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The next meeting of the City Council is March 7th. We have a few items. One of note is the firefighter, firefighter memorial update. That'll come to the council. We have a nice plan and project in agreement on that. And a couple other issues would be rerouting of the Breeze line, and some minor amendments to CDBG and the play fiduciary authorization. That concludes my report.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
As to the firefighter memorial, I'm assuming that this is in, you've been in contact with the family of the firefighters, so they're in agreement with this?
Yeah, we, we've had great meetings with all the stakeholders involved. They're very happy, and we're excited to bring it to council.
Okay.
Okay, oral reports from City Councilmembers. Ms. Soto, let's start with you.
No reportable items, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Ms. Aguilar. No reportable items. Okay. Mr. Escobedo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On February 13, I attended the user fee stakeholder meeting. And on February 16, I attend the employee awards dinner.
Mr. Cordero.
Yes, Madam Mayor. I attended the user fee meeting at the library on the 13th. On the 14th, I was, did the Cal City's roundtable on the homeless issue. That was kind of a, it was, it was virtually, so they, they just let people talk. They didn't really do much in the way of policy, or projects, or programs, or anything. They said, "What's going on at your house, and what's going on at your area," and so on. And, and so they listened to a lot of ideas that a lot of people had, but there was no decisions made. On the 15th, I was at the 3CE board meeting, and that was very interesting. It was a goodbye meeting for, for Tom. And so there's always just a lot going on there. It's, it's a very fascinating and fast-moving with the energy issues and the, all the things with electricity. On the 16th, I was with the Lori Timora, and we discussed the project over on, the proposed project over on Sway in Maine with the Grossmans. There's just issues that we're dealing, trying to deal with. On the 18th, I attended the Black History Rally at La Vignino Center over by the library. It was well-done, a lot of activity, very, I get, very vibrant. The speakers and stuff were, were, were quite dynamic. And then I also attended the, the dinner at the library, the fundraising dinner at the library. That was well-done, where Joe Dana spoke about the Dana family. And he's always really exciting to listen to. And if you ever get a chance to hear any of his presentations, it is, it's well worth listening to. And it, kind of exciting to know that somebody that's so meaningful in our country, settled right here in Nopomo, and was here for a number, is still here. That the facility is still here and operating, and now it's a, a center, a library kind of thing. And that's it for me, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. February 7th, I did the Ben Hayes Show in the morning. On the 8th of February, I attended the North County Subregional Planning Committee, and then the Executive, Executive Committee for SB CAG. Later that day, I did a ride-along with our code, code compliance, and our arrangers, and a couple of our police officers. On February 9th, I went to the meeting on Hope Village, attended the retirement for Dave Kell, which was a nice attendance by a lot of people being there and wishing him well. Did my team council meeting, both at Santa Maria High School and Pioneer High School. Later that afternoon, met with the Econ Alliance with our telecom consultant. And, and that's the consultant that's gonna be doing our fiber optic, fiber optic connection up and down the county. February 10th, I did Fighting Back Santa Maria Valley. On the, February 13th, attended the user fee stakeholder meeting. On the 14th, I did, I did Fighting Back Santa Maria Valley, and I, I didn't do the, the, I did not do that one. So, okay. So on the 15th, and thank you very much for doing the 3CE, because Congressman Carvajal was in Lompoc, and we did a roundtable there on housing. And much of what Mr. Dickerson was saying tonight, the importance of housing. And, and one thing I didn't know is that, especially with Vandenberg being the spaceport, that 80% of their people do not live on base. They live either in Lompoc, or they're gonna live in Santa Maria. And that is another, I, I guess I thought, I was being very myopic, because you think about the needs of housing we have here. We also need to figure out what kind of housing for Vandenberg also. On the 16th, I attended SB CAG, and then I did the, the City Selection Committee for, LAFCO needed a new member. And on the 18th, I did the Black History Month celebration that Lawanda did, was in charge of it, and did a fantastic job. And then attended the library annual fundraiser. And that is it. This meeting is adjourned. Oh, I, I didn't do the, the employee appreciation. That was, that was a great dinner this, this, this year. Everyone did a great job putting it together. Meeting is adjourned. Meeting is adjourned.